We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Kingman, held at 5:00 on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. And the following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made related to there, too. We're going to change it a little bit. We are going to have our roll call, and then we will have our invocation and pledge of allegiance, and then we will continue with our special meeting. So Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor John Ramos of the First Southern Baptist Church. If we could all stand for that, and then afterwards, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you seeking wisdom, guidance, decisions that have to be made, special meetings, fiscal budgets, a lot of great growth, a lot of things happening in Kingman. And Lord, I just ask that you would give this body collective wisdom beyond their years, that they would make decisions that would benefit not only the city, but Lord, that would bring you glory and honor. And Lord, I just ask for a special blessing upon this evening and all decisions made. In the name of Jesus, I ask this, my Lord and Savior, in His name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please, please, follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one on our special meeting, item, agenda item. It'll be a public hearing on Resolution 5468 and adoption of the fiscal year 2023-24 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. The public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2023-24 Final Budget and Capital Improvement Plan represents the last step in the formal budget process. The City Council may make additional modifications prior to adoption of the final budget, but may not increase the budget above the appropriate appropriations set in the tentative budget, and that's according to state bill S 365-840.42. Staff recommend City Council hold the public hearing, make any modifications, and adopt Resolution Number 5468 and the fiscal year 2023-24 Final Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Foggan, any light on this?
Well, hopefully some light on it, Mayor, Council. We have provided in the packets basically an outline of what will be needed and what we were asked for in our last work session with a couple different options that Council wanted to look at before they approved the final budget. And so to walk you through that, Tina is going to share with you the work that she did and answer any questions with regards to those options that we were asked to look at. And I think from there, we'll be ready based on the direction you want to go to have our 2024 budget approved.
Tina, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. So as Mr. Foggan shared, this is the last step in our final budget adoption process. So let's look quickly at where we've been over the last few months. So in May, we held three budget work sessions. The tentative budget adopt was adopted in mid-June. We held another work session last week, and then we're here this evening for the final budget adoption. So some of the key takeaways from the Public Safety Plans Work Session from last week, there were a handful. Definitely changes to the step plans are going to increase the police and fire operating budgets, which ultimately impacts the general fund, and that would be for a long term. Anything with salaries is recurring. And another takeaway was that eliminating overlap is the ultimate objective, but that the cost of eliminating overlap, while still providing for 3.5% step increases, is a significant fiscal impact. Another takeaway was that a solution that addresses overlap without creating a financial burden on the general fund is desired. Also, for many years, this was shared, that for many years, employees didn't receive salary increases, and that is true. In the last five years, however, there have been pay plan and pay grade adjustments. There have been salary increasing increases and cost of living adjustments. And then lastly, annual increases are not a guarantee. And although it is this council's priority, and we're going to put a policy into place so that our public safety can receive those annual increases, if there is a major downturn in the economy, if and that future council decides that that isn't their priority, they are able to change those. So those were the key takeaways from that work session. So in developing some step plan options for you to consider, we were given some direction in doing so. But we also had brought to the table a couple of options that were already out there. So the existing option, which we're referring to in this presentation as Option 1, and that is the option that was developed during the budget work sessions. Then we have Option 2. Option 2 is the step plan that was requested at the last work session. It eliminated the first two steps of Option 1, therefore reducing overlap, and it still kept each step increase at 3.5%. Then we have Option 3 and 3B, and really, they're very, very similar. This, this, both of these plans basically eliminated all of the overlap, kept the plans at 10 steps, but reduced the step increases, whether we used a consistent percentage across the steps or whether that be a flat dollar amount. So we did Option 3 with the percentages and Option 3B with a dollar amount. And then Option 4 was the full elimination of overlap and reducing the steps for those leadership positions based on that reduction. So during the, during the work session last week, we talked about a philosophy that was going to be used for our promotional increases and for our annual increases and for lateral hires. And it seemed that there was consensus on that philosophy. And, but what we haven't talked about is the placement of our existing employees. They're not promotionals. They're not, this isn't an annual increase. This is getting them on a brand-new pay plan, right? So we've taught, we know that we need to do that, but I don't think that visually, we've been able to share anything with you. And so we thought that for this presentation, it might be helpful to see each of the options for our employees. And so to not provide names, but to give you an idea for each of an employee that we identified in each of the leadership positions, that we could maybe go through what that might look like for a couple of them. Now, this is just for your reference and for your use, and we'll just pick a couple. So we will use Lieutenant C., who is an employee in our, in our police workforce. He currently has one year as a lieutenant as of July of 2023. Fiscal year 23,000, fiscal year 23 salary was just under $88,000. Now, in Option 1, using, before I go through that, I do want to share that Option 1, Option 2, 3, 3B, and 4 are all using, are all placing our existing employees on the steps based on years of service, ensuring that they do not lose anything in their salary, okay? That Option 1 with alternative placement, we'll talk about that when we get to that particular column. So in Option 1, the Lieutenant C. would receive a salary of $90,326, which is step 3 on that particular plan, again, so he doesn't lose anything. The Option 1 with alternative placement was something that after the budget work sessions, and we put figures together and shared them with, with our police and fire senior leadership, they had come back to the table and requested, maybe we look at a different way of placing our, those positions. Instead of years of service, let's look at total years of service. Let's look at where they were, how long they served in the, as a police officer, how long they served as a sergeant, and then let's look at where we would have put them as a lieutenant. So that particular column uses a different philosophy for our existing employees. And so that would have placed Lieutenant C. on step 4 of the Option 1 pay plan. So now let's move with all of the other options. Using Option 2's plan, Lieutenant C. will be placed at step 1 at $90,326. Option 3, he will be placed at step 1. Option 3B, step 1, and Option Step, and Option 4, step 1. They are all above what he is currently making. So that just gives an example of the philosophy that we used and how we are placing our existing employees. And I don't need to go down the list, but I want to make sure that there aren't any questions or clarifications that need to be made as we're looking at the placement of our existing employees. All right. So now let's talk about the cost of each of these options. So Option 1, again, was the, is kind of our baseline that we're using here. So when we look at Option 1 with that alternative placement, there is a difference in cost of annually, so just for fiscal year 24, of just over $97,000. For Option 2, there is a difference of $212,000. Option 3 is just over $300,000. Both of Option 3's are just over $300,000. And then Option 4 is $422,000. So what does that look like over the five years? And you will see it ranges anywhere from $500,000 all the way to the $2.2 million, depending on the option or the plan that is selected. So ultimately, we're here tonight to select a plan and know whether or not this affects us moving forward with the final budget adoption. So does this affect the fiscal year 24 final budget? Now, we know that the final budget cannot exceed the tentative budget's appropriation, so we can't increase the final budget tonight, can't do that. So because of this, contingency reserves are being recommended to be used for fiscal year 24, for whatever step plan is selected this evening. By using these reserves, then the fiscal year 24 final budget will be the same amount as the tentative budget, which is $365.8 million. So it will have no effect on the fiscal year 24 final budget appropriations. And then during the fiscal year 25 budget process, we'll develop a new five-year forecast and then determine how we will address the future costs of whatever step plan is selected. So the next steps for this evening would be to select a step plan and then ultimately adopt Resolution Number 5468, which would adopt the fiscal year 24 final budget. Thank you.
Tina, contingency reserves. Is this the same reserves that we are lowering already because of, for street improvement? Or is it, where is this contingency, where is this coming from?
So in many of the funds, we set aside contingency, and that's in the event, so it will not change anything, Mayor. It will not. We have $1 million set aside in contingency reserves in the general fund right now, and it's for these unexpected, unforeseen, extreme circumstances is when we tap into those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, questions?
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Tina, just to understand perfectly clear, back on Slide 8, using these contingency funds, it means that no matter what plan City Council adopts tonight, that the balance, the budget is balanced?
Correct. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
On the slide where you show us the different salary impact examples, I have a question about Option 1 with alternative placement. So you said leadership got together and they decided where to place. When did that happen? Did that, did that happen after, after the city decided, here's where we think they should place them? The city meaning, you know, the upper administration. You delivered the information to the chiefs. The chiefs went and had a conversation with their people.
Their teams.
Yes, and then they came back and suggested something different.
At that, very close to that point. At that point is when, I believe, we met, met with the mayor and the vice mayor as far as, hey, there might not be, this might not be the direction. We might want to look at something else.
Okay. So my question is the alternative placement. So to me, that seems very subjective. Is there a policy in place that corrects that or, or doesn't allow for, for that to happen?
So it's just for the initial placement. It wouldn't be used for anything going forward, again, for that philosophy for promotionals. It was shared, that philosophy was shared with the senior leadership of police as far as how we arrived at that, and that was based on their direction. And, and then again, then we were, then we were approached that that might not be the right direction to go.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm just going to put it out there. I'm in favor of Option 2, and I'll tell you why. I'm in favor of it because it reduces overlap. So I know we talked in our workshops that we might not be able to correct it all in this fiscal year, and we wanted to do something, and we wanted it to be on the right track. So in looking at Option Number 2, it reduces the amount of overlap. The overall impact to the budget is less. And then looking out forecasting fiscal year 24 to 28, it seems to be about a difference, I'll just go with Option 3. It seems to be a difference of about $98,000 per fiscal year, 95 to 98,000. So with that, I'm in favor of that. I think my conversations with several individuals have leaned to the fact that, you know, this has been a long time coming, and, and we've taken it pretty far, and we've gotten pretty far, and we'll still have some work to do, which, to the mayor's point, in the last council session workshop, you said, you know, we might not be able to fix this all this year. So I'm just taking that into consideration. So I'm leaning towards Option Number 2. I just want to put that out there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council? Yes.
Mayor, I'm moving in support of Option Number 3. This is the one. Thank you so much, Tina, for creating Option 3 and 3B. You, you understood exactly what I was going for at our last budget meeting, and you reflected it perfectly here. The reason I'm moving in support of Option 3 is because this resolves the overlap issue that the City Council was so concerned about at previous hearings. We will not have to address overlap in the future with Option 3. It also creates a trajectory for every single one of our city employees to look forward to on their given rank or position over the course of 10 years, and it doesn't shortchange some. Once they promote into higher position, they still have the 10 years fully to grow, but it also incentivizes individuals to promote earlier. So for instance, if you're a firefighter, two, three, four year, you have an incentive to promote to engineer. The third, fourth year, fifth year engineer has an incentive to promote to captain and so on and so forth, while not removing any steps or shortchanging some, saying, well, it takes me longer to cap out. Also, I believe that Option 3 will save money in the long run. When we look at Option 3, we, excuse me. The reason it'll save money in the long run is because we are not taking into account through these numbers that Tina has provided us, the loss that we incur as a city when there's turnover. So when people are quitting these roles, going to other counties, other cities. This incentivizes people and our valued employees to stay here. And lastly, police and fire are reporting to me, and hopefully other members of the council, that they're already seeing improved retention. Multiple people are saying, I'm not retiring this year. I'm looking forward to this bonus, and I'm going to stick around for three years so it affects my state retirement. Also, they're seeing improvements in applications, more people desiring to come to Kingman. And this will resolve the issue of, well, before we have to scrape from the bottom of the barrel, now we could actually put our best foot forward and say, no, we get to choose the best of the best. I encourage my fellow council members to support Option 3 for all of these reasons. And truly, the difference between the fiscal year 24 between Option 2 to Option 3 is approximately $100,000. But I believe that we will see much more than that by retaining these valued employees. And yes, over the course of five years, it'll cost the city $1.6 million, but much less than Option 4 at $2.2 million.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Pat. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Savage.
Um, I'm kind of leaning the same way Cameron is, except I was looking more at 3B. It's, it's very significant, but I, I prefer, let me go through my email here. It's $30,000 more over the four, the five fiscal years. Where's my steps? And it gives them, instead of a percentage idea of an increase, it gives them a, a dollar cap on the, on the tiers. I did speak with some, some members of our public safeties, and I told them that's kind of where I was leaning, and I'm glad someone else kind of saw what I saw. So I'm also in favor of 3B.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. Okay. Yes, Counselor Staley.
Okay. So you just stole my thunder.
You always steal mine, so I'm returning the favor.
We, I, you know, we've talked about this a lot, and I value all city employees, but there is something to be said for city employees after wear bulletproof vests and carry guns or city employees after run into burning buildings to save people's lives. We rely on them every single day to keep us safe. And I know my constituents support Kingman Police Department and Kingman Fire Department. They are important to us, and we want to make sure that we are offering a salary that is comparable to what Bullhead and Havasu, the county, what they're paying, because what we've been doing for a number of years is training police officers, and we, we invest all this money and time into them, and then they go to other agencies to make more money. And so we, we aren't talking about the millions of dollars that are spent being this training ground for police officers that end up going elsewhere. And, and while these are big numbers, certainly what, what we save on the back end, I believe, will still end up in the positive on this. So I, the, the reason why we, this got extended out and why the, the budget didn't get approved initially is I was uncomfortable with placing people on the steps, not necessarily according to years in service. And I wondered how we were going to fix future problems. If this was just a one-time fix, would we just be creating more compression, what I call compression, down the road? And so I wanted to come back and fix this. And, and a total fix where there's no overlap would be Option 3, Option 3B, or Option 4. Those are complete fixes where we don't have to come back. And then Option 2 is a compromise. So I, of course, I would like to get it all fixed this year, call it good, have a step program that's easy to use. Everybody knows where they're going to go, where they're going to be placed, where they're going to go if they get a promotion. Everybody's being paid a comparable wage to the other agencies around here. So where I'm going with this is I will support the majority, whether that's 3, 3B, or a compromise of 2, as long as we're doing the right thing by our public safety. I, like I said, it started out, I wanted to remove all overlap, so that would be 3 or 3B for me, but we'll see where, where everybody else is at.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Counselor Ward or Counselor Walker, comments? Counselor Ward.
I'm, I tend to agree with Cam. I'm, I'm looking at 3 as the option that I would support.
Okay. That's it? Any other?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Short and to the point. Good job, Soiley.
I've looked at it so many times, I'm tired of looking at it.
Amen. Counselor Walker.
You know, we, we did send them with a message to try to take that out. 2 is a compromise. It's not a total fix. And I think Councilmember Pat said at best, we'll recoup the money we're going to spend by retaining officers. And, and that's been one of the biggest issues we've had, is we train these guys and they leave. So if we just fix it, let's fix it. And, and I would be behind. Originally, I was kind of looking at 2, you know, because I'm looking at the savings. But is it worth saving $98,000 this year and we could possibly lose two or three officers? I, I don't know if that would, you know, could happen, but I think we need to send a message that we're, we want to take care of our employees that wear the bulletproof vest, the ones that run into the burning buildings, the ones that show up middle of the night to save your loved one. I mean, we've had an issue with losing paramedics. You know, let's, you know, I think this pay plan we did, plus this, is really fixing this issue. So I'm good with 3 or 3B. I'll go with the majority, probably, on one of those two.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Savage.
I have a question for Tina. There's really no difference between 3 and 3B, except one is showing a conversion of pay raises as a percentage, and one is a salary increase. Is that correct, Tina?
It's correct. 3 is a consistent percentage increase between steps. 3B is a consistent dollar amount between steps. So the longer.
Firstly, in my opinion, in, in my opinion, employees like numbers as far as dollars, not percentages. They don't want to figure out percentages, so I'm all for them knowing exactly what they're getting as a dollar increase.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Savage. Appreciate that. Okay. Originally, I was dead set on Option 1 because I thought we had already given them some increase in the first budget work session. But you all have made some valid points. And Option 3, I am leaning towards because it eliminates all overlap, and we won't have to address this again. We shouldn't have to address this next year. Counselor Staley, you make a valid point, and it has been echoed already, is the fact that we lose money when we train officers and our public safety. And we don't, there's no way to get that money back, and there is no hope from the legislature of ever passing a bill to get any of that recoup. It'd be great if they could, but I don't think it's ever going to happen. And once again, good government is, is based on compromise. And so I am leaning towards Option 3. I am concerned about budget and how we're going to pay for it because I know we, we, even when we did the first Option 1, we did away with some CIP. And so that is a concern. We might have to eliminate other capital improvement projects to take care of this. Once again, our public safety, brothers and sisters, are our most important concern. So I echo the feelings of many of Option Number 3.
Mayor.
So that's where I sent, yes, Counselor Staley.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can we?
We, we need, we have public, public.
Oh, public hearing. So sorry. I was so excited.
So we've had discussion, and so. So, we've had discussion, and so, any other comments until we open, so we can open for public hearing?
One last thing.
Yes, Councilor.
The reason why I'm moving for option three instead of 3B is because, over the course of five years, it effectively does the same thing. You start at the same step one, you end at the same step 10. For Mr. Savage's point, the hard numbers are on the step plans that were handed out, regardless of if we're giving increases by thousands or by percentage. We have what those hard numbers look like, the employees can see what their pay will be. And it will save us $300,000 out of the two, three, and 3B over the course of five years. It resolves all the issues while being the most fiscally conservative of the three options, well, of the option three or 3B.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay. If there's no other comments from council, let's open this public hearing. This public hearing is open. Anybody in the audience who'd like to have a comment or say on this, we'd like to hear from it, would you like to come forward, please? And state your name.
My name is Robert Sayer, and I'm just curious if we have an actual number for the cost when someone is trained and leaves. I think that would be helpful.
We do have that cost. Chief or Manager Foggan?
I got it. It's $67,144. That's how much it costs to hire and train an officer over the course of 42 weeks.
I think that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Any other comments from the public, or those who might be? Annie, I don't think we've had anybody sign up online for any public comment, right? Okay. Okay, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Carl, can we have a motion now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilor Saly.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 5468 with option number three of the payment plan.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a session?
Oh, we can, yes. I'm sorry, Councilor Walker.
I just had a question. We named out a few new jobs.
Can't hear him.
We laid out a few new openings. One was for developmental services director. Is that in this budget? And is also the assistant city manager in this budget?
Yes.
Tina, okay.
Both are? Okay, perfect.
I also have one comment.
Head Councilor.
I know I'm very excited about option three as well as this fiscal budget, but I would wonder if the council would entertain an idea to make one amendment, and that amendment is to remove standby pay for police officers serving as detectives, meaning they get 10 hours of overtime per week solely because they are on-call, for instance. And the reason why is because I'm personally against anyone getting paid to just sit around and wait, especially when we've learned that they do have call-out pay, which is two hours of overtime as soon as they answer a call and they go out. So they have this. The fiscal impact every year is $30,000 for that, and you're paying $30,000 over the course, for instance, of a year. You know, and I'm not trying to diminish anyone's role, it's very important to be on-call when you need detectives, but as a prosecutor, I'm on-call as well, but you're sitting there waiting for the phone to ring, and sometimes it doesn't ring. Also, I would be interested in amending the budget to remove the two part-time police cadet positions to the department, because that's also $36,000. This is 66,000, almost $67,000 a year over the course of five years, is three, over $300,000. These are small concessions to be made to balance a budget, but we've already focused on the big points. The big point is reducing overlap, making the 10 steps, but also focusing on fiscal responsibility. So, I would either like discussion on that. I know we keep tweaking the numbers. I'm probably annoying the mayor. I don't wanna tweak the numbers much further, but I do wanna be fiscally responsible, looking at what we have, because I think that option three tonight was a big win. Those were the primary concerns for both police and fire. These other positions, these other things, the standby pay was very small, the cadets were very small, and we wanna focus on the meat and potatoes, which is getting the police officers to say.
So, can I just interrupt Councilman Pat?
Yes.
You're requesting to make a motion to amend the current motion by removing those items?
Just two, yes.
So, if that's the motion you've made, then there can be a second, if there's a second?
Well, actually, I think he wants to throw that out there as a thought, correct?
Yes.
And then open it to council for discussion.
Sorry, as a discussion.
I don't think we can do.
Is that something we can even do?
You have a motion and a second?
So we'd have to rescind that motion.
Whoever made the motion, the council is...
You can actually, you can have a discussion after a motion's been made, but it's generally gonna be centered around that particular motion. If you're looking to make those changes, you would, I'm trying to, we don't do this very often, so I'm trying to think what's the most smooth way to do this. Yeah, I think your best bet would be to withdraw your original motion to continue this discussion, if that's the council's desire and/or direction.
I do not wish to rescind my motion. I don't agree. I believe that because detectives are not paid to step up to be in that detective role, they're paid with, officers are paid, that that additional standby pay helps make up for that as well. I believe that the two positions are very important, because those are positions, ideally, those are people that will move up into the officer role, once they're old enough or once they're prepared for that. And I know that's something that the chief did support, was having those two positions. So I will not amend my motion.
Any other discussion from council?
I just wanna make a comment. I know that, I put it out there that I was in support of two, but obviously, you're very compelling. It's what you do for a living. So, I do see where you have some very valid points, and I'm just happy that we're at the finish line. I'm happy that we are doing goodwill to our public safety folks, and I'm just, I'm happy that we're not gonna be talking about this next year, so.
Good point.
I would just like to add to that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
For an officer or even a fire person, has to be on standby. Fire department, that's more expected, but to have a detective on standby, kinda sitting around, twiddling their thumbs, and not being able to really enjoy what they wanna do with their off time, I think that's pittance as far as keeping those positions. And I'm in agreeance with Councilwoman Saly, just to keep it straight as three.
Okay, thank you for that input. Councilor Walker or Ward? Any more comment?
I'm good.
Okay. So, Councilor Pat, I don't think, I mean, I think that should've been brought up before we moved. You have some valid points, but it's negligible, and I think there's, and I think there's support still for the motion.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. Real good.
Yes.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for getting that done. That is monumental.
Thank you so much.
We will now move into our regularly scheduled meeting. Do we wanna take a break for anything, anybody? Or should we?
Five minutes?
Five minutes. Five-minute break, and we'll move into a regularly scheduled city council. Welcome back. Let's call this meeting to order. We will move into our regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council. Item number one, call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular group, person, or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith?
We don't have anybody signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counselors, are there any items that need to be removed? Okay, we do need to remove item 2C. We need to pull it for some paperwork issues, and it will be brought back to council in a future meeting. So, that's happening with item 2C. So, hearing none, can we have a motion then for the consent agenda for items 2A, B, and then continuing on D through L?
Some of them.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, old business, we have none. Item number four, new business. Ordinance number 1950, public nuisance, five zero, I'm sorry, public nuisances and property maintenance code update. Staff has completed an update to chapter seven, article four, public nuisances and property maintenance of the Kingman City Code. Major updates include replacing specific items such as code enforcement officer with city official throughout to encompass other departments. Updated Kingman zoning ordinance to be Kingman zoning code throughout. Specify that only police officers can issue criminal citations, and the city attorney's office may file criminal complaints, definitions, and updated timelines. Staff recommends approval. Any discuss?
That would be me.
Yes, sir.
And I will do my best to work my way through this. This is a project that Deputy City Attorney Amy Schreiber had been working on. I had really hoped that she would be here to give a presentation, because I know there's gonna be a lot of questions. She did deliver her baby, and she is gonna be out for a while, so I appreciate all the work you're gonna give me tonight, so.
Why are you looking at me?
'Cause I just passed. It's all good. It's all good. A couple of things that were really highlighted, that we really wanted to address, I think specifically with some of the weed concerns, because we know the weeds are a big problem. And Amy worked with fire department, the police department, talked to the streets folks, because everybody has some roles and responsibility in the weed problem. So we really spent a lot of time trying to get that sorted out. I think the departments feel that it's very clear, and it allows them to be able to take the enforcement actions that they feel they need to take to address all weeds, not just dead, dry, fire hazard weeds, but the green weeds that are on the property, completely on the property, or surrounding the property, that kind of butt up to the right of way or to the sidewalk, because we've had some problems with that, as well as stuff that's encroaching signage on the side of the street. I think those are the major, major changes. I know council has got some comments. I've been approached before the meeting, and if there's anything specific we need to go over, we will go over it right now.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Councilor Ward?
Item G, weeds in excess of six inches. The part I have a problem with is where we're demanding that the people... we're demanding that the people take care of the city right of way from their property line, which Kimwood's a good example. There, the street runs east and west. Most of the houses don't face that street, and there's fifteen to twenty foot of right of way there. And the problem I have is we're asking them to do something as a city we're not doing. If you go down Kimwood and make a right onto, we come out on airway from eastern, there are weeds three and a half, four foot high on the city right of way on both sides. What I don't get is that we're demanding that they do it when we don't do it. If we're going to do it, the city should lead by example. And if, when you come up to the end of that at the stoplight at airway, there are weeds three and a half, four foot tall, right straight across and on both sides. They did go in and clear out a little section on the left so you could see at the intersection, but my objection is just that. If we're going to require people to keep our right of way clean, we need to keep our right of way clean. If we're not going to, then we shouldn't pass.
So, I guess I can comment on that portion. I think this language is pretty standard in most cities. I think part of this is an operational issue where you're looking at that part between the property line, the sidewalk up to the edge of the street. That's pretty universal through across municipalities to require that to be maintained by the property owner. If that's something the council wants to address, that's definitely something we can address. But if your concern is weeds on city properties that aren't being dealt with, then I think that's more of an operational issue rather than this ordinance.
Well, what I'm saying is we shouldn't expect the people to do what we don't do. And with this, we're requiring them to do what we don't do. And I'm not in favor of that at all. And then I had a couple of other items. One of them was on the articles for sale outdoor, outdoors. That's basically, I was looking at it as if you can't sell anything out of your driveway. And I talked to Carl earlier, but I've sold a car, a truck, and a couple of trailers out of my driveway, and I don't see a problem with it. And, but under this, if you took it to the latter, you can't put anything out there for sale. And I'm not in favor of that. The other thing was on junk cars, the description of a junk car. The first part of it I'm okay with, up to where they're up on blocks, but when it comes to a vehicle with one or more deflated tires, or a wheel or a tire that's been removed, or any vehicle which is inoperable due to mechanical failure, if you're restoring cars, which I do, you're from time to time going to have those cars sitting in your driveway missing parts. I move it in and out of my garages as I'm working on it. And it just, to me, a car with a flat tire doesn't make it a junk car. That's all I'm saying, that we've went too far on the, in my opinion.
So, just going to jump in there. I really got a perfect example of what this is speaking to on that. So, on Beale Street, I don't want to call anybody out. I don't know whose vehicle it is, so I'm not really calling them out. But there, on Beale Street, there was a vehicle that had sat in the same parking space for a long time. I want to say at least a year, maybe longer. And the, all four tires were flat. I don't know if the vehicle was registered with a current license, legal license plate or not, but it had sat there with four flat tires on Beale Street, just looking really bad. It just was not attractive to our downtown at all. Our code enforcement made contact with the owner, and I want to say within a couple of days, the tires were filled back up on that vehicle and it was operational at that point. But four flat tires, and I want to say that it was well over a year that it had sat there with four flat tires. And four flat tires, that vehicle's not operable. You're not going to drive it anywhere anyway. And so, I think that's really, it's not the, I'm actively working on it in the driveway, is it is, there's four flat tires and there's weeds growing out the cracks of the pavement. And I know where that car is too, by the way. And so, I think that as we're looking at these, we're, obviously, there's a lot of vehicles that are, that, we have homeowners that work on their own vehicles. I don't think that we're suggesting that we would, that we would go after or want to actively get someone who's fixing brakes on their car, but if that same vehicle sat there on, you know, propped up, maybe on a jack, whatever, missing a tire for six months, I would say that they're not actively working on it, so.
Okay, and that's my problem, Ron. There's no time limits on any of this. And it, this has one flat tire. If a car has one flat tire, it's a junk, considered a junk car. And that's not my definition of a junk car. I have one other issue, and that's on parking a vehicle on property that you own, improved or unimproved for sale, or anything. I think that if you, if you own a, if you own a home and then you own a lot somewhere else that you maintain, I don't see the problem with parking a car on that lot for sale. I just don't. And there's two different clauses in here on it. And that's, I'll be, I'll be voting no on this, and that's my reasoning. That's basically all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Ward. Carl, question. Most of this stuff is already in our code, right? Only the lines where there's corrections and the termin, you know, the terminology that you used?
Correct.
So, all this is already in our code?
What you'll see is strikeout is the line through
Right.
bold capital is what's being added.
So, the bold, okay.
Right. So, and I completely understand some of these questions and concerns. So, I just want to go through a couple, and again, we can always come back with and revisit these. The, I'm trying to even look at my handwriting. Regarding the weeds, I guess that that's just going to be an operational issue, what your concern is with that, whether or not you want the city to require from the property line to the right of way. If you don't want that, the city can remove that, that, we can remove that language. That just obviously adds a greater burden to city staff to take care of those weeds. And I would say we're already, could be behind, some would say. So, again, that's whatever is council discretion. I can, to make whatever kind of revisions we'd like to make. Regarding the sale, the articles for sale outdoors, we do have a separate ordinance in the city code regarding the sale of cars on, on private property as well as on what's listed as commercial property. It's not a free-for-all, because we're trying to prevent residential neighborhoods becoming parking lots or, or sales lots. So, I think there's some concern with that. But the general articles of sale was basically tried to address, again, business that occurs frequently on residential lots, which is why you have the yard sale and the definitions of the yard sale, meaning X number of days, then there has to be a break before you can have more yard sales. You can only have so many per year. And again, it was a problem in the past when that language was put in there, was to deal with that constant business operating in the neighborhood with neighborhood complaints. Going to your definition with the cars, again, I get it. Each individual item listed in that of what's a junk vehicle is not indicative that it's a junk vehicle. These are, it's going to be a totality of circumstances, so those are going to be indicators of this would be defined as a junk vehicle if this is here. If just one flat tire and you're in the driveway, we're not going to go up and say, that's a junk vehicle. We're going to make you remove it. It's going to be all those other factors that are added on top of it. And I know that relies on the discretion of your code enforcement officers, but all officers have discretion. You can't write a code that's perfect, that nails every particular situation. There has to be some ability for, for those individuals to make good decisions, but also have that, that ability to say, okay, this doesn't fit. Or, yeah, the language here looks like it, but it's not the situation. They're actively working on something. So, if you're working in your driveway and you've got four flat tires, but you're actively working on it, well, yeah, I get it. But if there's some language that you would like to see, like I said, you mentioned timeframes on working, yeah, we can look at that and definitely add a timeframe on, on vehicle maintenance. I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah. Okay. I don't either. I was just expressing my concerns.
Yeah, yeah. No, I appreciate the input.
And I don't have a problem with the garage sale part of it. I've seen that, and that's pretty much standard in other cities. The weed problem's unique to Kingman, pretty much. Maybe a few other cities in Arizona.
Yes. I think weeds have been a big problem this, from last, starting from last fall and all the rains we had, and now it continues. We've been having some more. It is a problem. Staff, I mean, not staff, council, any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Councillor Salley?
As anticipated. What, my first question is, what was your purpose for this update? Was it just cleanup?
It's clean, it's cleanup. So, what we've been trying to do is go through various sections in the code, and that's one of the assignments I had given, what I'd given Amy when she was hired, is to start working through these. And it's a, it's a long process because you've got to get this input from the various departments. And knowing especially, there are certain problems that we're trying to deal with. The weeds was, was an issue because that some of the definitions led us to believe, okay, well, you can have green weeds so much, but once it turns brown, it's different. And then also, who's responsible for dealing with that? So, that's one of the reasons why we tried to, to make this much more clear, as well as input from the enforcement officers noting that, okay, I don't understand what this means. Can we, can we dial it down? And the input we've had and the meetings we've had, they've been very happy with this clarity, so.
Okay, that was my next question, is if the neighborhood services felt more confident with the language. Now, I personally have seen an uptick, and I believe that we've seen it in the meetings as well, people coming in and complaining about code enforcement and living next to blighted properties especially, and not seeing the properties be cleaned up, not really having faith in the system that we're doing something about it. So, I, as I read through this, I don't really see enough happening in these updates to improve our process, improve our ability to get people to clean up their properties that, you know, not like what Smiley is talking about, but the really bad ones where there are ten junk vehicles parked out front. They are not working on them. They're never going to work on them. They just, that one broke down and they bought another one, and that one broke down and they bought another one, and they, you know, they're bringing down the property values. So, in, I have been spending time nerding out on this and looking at other cities' code policies, and I think that we could do more, and I think that we could be more specific, like Smiley had said about putting in exact timelines and those kind of things to really allow. Like, one of the things that I think is unfair is like, an RV can park, you know, I've been seeing this lately where we've got, people are living on the street, they're parking there, but apparently if they move five feet forward, now their timeline starts again and they get three more days to live there. And, I mean, I live next to a development. They've put in all the streets and sidewalks, but there are no homes. So, you could literally just work your way around that neighborhood forever and live over there, and there's no hookups, there's no septic, they're just living there on, they, they have their generator on the street, they have their chairs out on the street, like, they are camping in this neighborhood.
And I guess I would comment on that. That is not the public nuisance code. That is not part of it. That's going to be the continual battle that cities are having on, in the Ninth Circuit
Sure.
Because of certain case law.
But it's an example of how our code doesn't have enough teeth in situations where it's obvious people are not, they're taking advantage of how it's written, they're not, they're not being good neighbors.
And I guess I'll go to the RV parking and storage on the street. We originally presented that with, they could only do immediate loading and unloading.
Right.
That was council's discretion to add the 72 hours.
Right.
So, yeah, so the question is then, yeah, they just move. How far do they move? What's the deal with?
But there should be some common sense in there.
No, and I get it.
You moving two feet doesn't count.
And I don't think that counts, and I get that. So, and that shouldn't be the standard for the enforcement.
And then, in the same, so with these, with what we're talking about here, this ordinance, these ordinances, they need to be, they need to have timelines, they need to be more clear-cut, but I think that we need to go a little bit further in what we will and will not tolerate, because I know I've heard, I think it was Sean Osterman was talking at Clean City Commission about, well, if you have a yard full of, you know, just all this metal and junk, then it, it becomes up to, you know, the owner can say, well, I'm using that, it isn't junk, and now we can't prosecute them. That doesn't seem right if it's truly a junk yard. So, maybe we need to have more specifics in this and timelines and these kinds of, so I would almost like to table this and come back to make sure that really, it's great that it's, we're talking about the weeds, but what about all the other problems?
So, I guess my question is timelines, what timeline are you referring to besides this working on a car? Because if we're talking about timeline to clean up, we have to do 30 days.
Right. No, I'm talking about, so you've got a broken down vehicle, how many days are you going to?
Yeah.
You know, and have those more specifics. And I think just putting more teeth in here that allow code enforcement or the officers or the fire department to really get in and clean it up. I also wondered why you removed the part about heavy trucks parking on the streets. I don't know what section that is, but.
I think that was the
It's kind of
Addressed elsewhere.
It's addressed, because I know that's also a problem. You've got semi-trucks parking in neighborhoods.
Right.
And then there's not enough room. Okay, and the, bear with me here.
No, that's fine.
I also, as I was looking through the state's ordinances, they talk about the, the cost to the property owner if they don't clean up, and how, you know, how the city will lean the property, exactly how that works, how much time they have. And, and I didn't see that anywhere in here, and I'm wondering why.
Well, because it's encompassed in the state statute.
Okay.
So, part of this process is, yeah, we do lean properties, and we've done that whenever it gets to the point where we abate the property, and that's where we go in and clean it up. The value of that cleanup is placed, we place a lean on that property.
Should that be in here to make it clear?
I don't think it needs to be. It's in the state statute, and I think that even says we lean the property in here.
Okay, I might have missed it.
Let me just scroll through.
So, councillor, it sounds like you actually want to make it a little more strict, which I understand because of some of the blight areas that we have in our city.
Right. It, what happens is we have people come in and they complain and they show us horrible pictures. You would never want to live next to that. And then the response is, is kind of like, well, we've done as much as we can, but we can't clean it up, or, you know, there's always, everybody's pointing fingers at each other, why can't happen? So, in these worst-case scenarios, I would like to see there be enough teeth in the code that the officers can clean up a property that is a detriment to that neighborhood.
You know, as you mentioned, and I know Carl's going to say it's in a different code, different part of the code, but for example, overseas containers on property.
Yes.
That's in a different part of the code.
That's zoning.
Right. But this is just addressing public nuisance.
This is just addressing the junk and debris.
Right.
And, and like, say, the weeds and stuff. And the lean part is
But it sounds like we need to have a little more teeth in it. Some clarification on timelines.
Yeah, and I can, we can definitely do that. I haven't seen that, but I'll look for that. Again, I guess asking, sorry, we're getting all sorts of messages. Timelines and enforcement process. Yeah, I'm aware. Yeah, sorry. Too many communications. So, we do have, there are timelines for the enforcement process and the cleanup, but you're asking for timelines, and I guess I'm confused about timeline beyond the car.
Smiley was talking about being clear about that car with a flat tire.
Yeah, that I'm good. Yeah, that I'm good. I can, we can address that.
Two days, 10 days, you know, what does that look like? I personally, what was that?
10 days for the first flat tire, 15 days for the second, and six months for the.
Something so that, you know, code enforcement can say, like, you're past, you're past this period of time. We've been watching it, and you're over. I, what I know is that other communities, they're doing it better than we are, they're, they're cleaner. And this is some, this is a hot button right now, where we've got more and more constituents complaining and wondering why we're not doing more. And I want to make sure that we're looking at every step of the process. We're giving enough power to neighborhood services to address these really bad cases and to take them all the way to getting the property cleaned up. And, and I think if it's possible, there should be something that says they have to keep their property within those guidelines, you know, after that. You can't just keep starting the clock over and over again.
What I'll do is, one, I do believe that code enforcement has the power to do the enforcement, and I think they know what they can and can't do, and I think it's clear for them. But I will look for the timeline issue and see if I can, like I said, I'll look and see what some other cities' codes are. I know ours are very similar to other codes, but maybe there's something I've missed, so.
Sounds like we need to table this and move it to a future meeting.
Yeah, just with the understanding that we're only, we're going to enforce how it's currently written, which is not perfect, so.
Well, and that one, like Counselor Sayley mentioned too, about pulling out semi trucks and parking on residential streets, that, that is.
That's in another section of the code.
Yeah, why?
Yeah, that was just cleaning up this because we have some duplica, duplication. And the problem when we do that, it conflicts with each other. So we're trying, when we catch these things, we're trying to pull these things out that are, are noted elsewhere.
Okay.
Mayor Watkins, before we.
Yes, Counselor Pat.
Before we table the discussion, I just have a quick question for Attorney Cooper. Is, doesn't the enforcement procedure under Division III of this article apply to this entire statute, or am I incorrect? Because, because I'm taking this city ordinance to mean that an individual has at least 30 days to fix their flat tire to console, Councilman Ward's concern.
Right, so as a general law city, we can only do what we're allowed to do. So the state statute outlines how we do this process, and you're correct. The state statute says we have to provide someone 30 days' notice of what their violations are for them to make whatever actions they need to make. They have the right to appeal that decision. At, at the point that 30 days have expired, I'm just going to give you kind of a quick outline of how we do this. We can charge them criminally, which will take six to nine months to process a criminal case. Or we can do the abatement process, which is not criminal, where we get a court order to, to have a cleaning company enter onto that property and clean the property. We found that that is the one that happens the quickest. It's part of my goals, it's part of the court's goals to try and make sure those files get processed quickly. When we do that cleanup, they either immediately pay, most of them do, or we lien the property.
But this still provides those in violation with our public nuisance code at least 30 days to comply because we're, we're providing notice.
Correct, and they have 30 days to.
And, and more, more on the point, Attorney Cooper, they would still have 30 days to cure a, oh, I apologize, I'm beating this microphone up tonight, cure a violation like of a junk vehicle or abandoned vehicle. So they, so, so the 30 days applies to them as well for all vehicles.
Correct.
Okay, so there, so there is a timeline. It's not, it's not that there isn't one, it's, it's that there's a minimum of 30 days. And then they have not more than 60 days in our enforcement portion of this code to correct the problem.
Correct. And we added that 60 days because there was concern that maybe we were too lenient letting people get work done if they're progressing. So we had Amy add that cap to, to narrow that down.
And, and Mr. Ward could correct me, but I don't think it takes 30 days to change a tire, so.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Good point, Counselor Pat.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Good insight.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yes, Attorney Cooper, I apologize, I apologize, Mayor. Attorney Cooper, when do you determine, so, so most of the time when you have these public nuisance violations, you're seeking the civil remedy rather than the criminal, like, what, 90% of the time?
I would say definitely because it's much quicker. There are some, I would interrupt though, there are some that I would say repeat offenders that sometimes we just do the criminal process. And again, the criminal process isn't necessarily fast or it's, the, the criminal process generally, like, say, takes six to nine months. They'll be put on probation, given time, which is the problem, is generally when they're put on probation, they have time to clean up that property on that probation, so it further extends the, the process. So when we do the criminal side, it's generally more the repeat people that we, I don't want to say punish, but that could be a punishment phase of it. And a lot of times, they will clean up that property, or it could be just somebody that we've done for the first go around. They clean up the property and, and we try to move those cases out because we're not, we don't want to tie up anybody's time.
Thank you, Attorney Cooper. I agree with my fellow council members. There are definite issues I would like to see rectified in the code. I, I, I think that, however, I think that there is a timeline, it's the 30 days if, if I'm correct. But I don't know, I'm an attorney, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing. But I, I would, I, I would like to table this for another discussion. That way we could clarify the issues that some of the council members are having and come back. Also, the law isn't perfect, that's why we call it practice.
Well, that's what I'll do. I will bring it back. I have many other things on my plate, so I'll try and do it as quick as I possibly. And I would like to note that anything you'd like on this was done by Ms. Schreiber. Anything you don't like, it's my responsibility, so.
Good job, Carl, good job. Do we need to make a motion, Carl, to table it? Okay, can we have a motion to table this item?
I'll make a motion to table this item.
I'll second that motion.
All those, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 4B, amended public hearing in consideration of resolution number 5471, abandonment of a public utility easement. A request from Jay Wayne DeLonge, property owner and applicant for the extinguishment, abandonment of a public utility easement. The easement was granted to the City of Kingman and accepted through the recording of the Wallopai Foot Hills Estates, Unit 4, Track 3003D subdivision plat on January 14, 1994. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July 11, 2023, and voted four to nothing, to zero, to recommend approval of the extinguishment of the subject easement. Staff recommends approval. Gary, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm just struggling a little bit with the technical side of things. I'm, I'll, I'll get it.
Do we want to handle both of these together since B and C are related? Carl, can we do that?
Yeah.
Do we need to do it separately?
He's hijacking.
Oh, they are different. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, they are separate.
IT's, it was taken over.
I know.
Yes, but they're not open.
No, they're not open.
Aaron, they're not open yet. Let me open them real quick.
Actually, some of them are remotely playing tug of war with the mouse.
Got it.
And. Thank you.
It's different. I'm just trying to.
Thank you, Mayor, for your, and members of the council for your patience. I'll try to go through these fairly quickly. I have two cases tonight. Both are public hearings, so there's some formality to it. But I'll try to go through this because you've had a couple long, a few long meetings now. But this is abandonment case number 23-002. It's for an abandonment of a utility easement. This is the request from Mr. Wayne DeLonge, and it's the 16-foot wide public utility easement on the east side of his property, located at 3812 Dakota Road in the Wallopai Foot Hill Estates subdivision. The easement is a portion of a larger easement network in the subdivision, and the easement runs about 409 feet along his lot. It's currently, he has a residential home that he's building currently, so it, it's well on its way to being finalized soon. There are no known utilities within the easement at this time, so it is eligible for abandonment by the council. Okay, this is a vicinity map. Again, it's in the Wallopai Foot Hill Estates subdivision. It's a very odd-shaped triangular piece there, so I didn't misdraw that. Move along here. Here's the easement drawn. It's two scales, so that shows you the relative size of it, 16 foot by 409. This aerial photo does not show his home being built currently. This is just the utility, the easement shown on the recorded plat. This is that overall network that runs north and south. I think it's a mile long approximately from southern down to Cheyenne. The existing use is, is going to be a single-family home. The surrounding properties are single-family homes as well. Projected land use, rural residential. The, the public utility easement was granted in 1994. The home, generally flat with a sort of a drop off towards the west, 9% slope, no utilities. There's a street in front, Dakota Road is 25 feet of asphalt, no sidewalks on either side. Here's some site photos. This does show the home being built, very nice home. This is looking south, the utility easement, that larger 125-foot wide corridor you can see with the overhead power lines there. This one's a smaller 16-foot wide utility easement that runs parallel with that larger easement. This is just looking across the street at the easement as it applies to the neighbor. Notifications were done properly and per code. Department agencies were notified. There were some concerns and questions. We hammered that out with some of the utility companies. Again, per the sidewalk, street sidewalk development rules and regulations, because there are no utilities in here, it's eligible for abandonment. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July 11, and they voted four to zero to recommend approval of their requested abandonment. Staff's recommendation would be to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, recommendation to approve the abandonment by adopting resolution 5471, which is in, in your packets. With that, I would stand for any questions?
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Lignis?
Yes, Counselor Sayley.
I was looking at your analysis here, and you talk about the proposed trail. And this is, this is that area, right?
It's, this is actually outside of that. This is in just a 16-foot wide utility easement, so this would have no bearing on that.
Okay, so, so this is, and that's what I thought when I was looking at this, but I wanted to make sure. So that trail is just in that same area.
Vicinity.
It is not, it will not stop the process of that walking path from happening, is that right?
No, in fact, you're correct. This is a 16-foot wide utility easement that's on his private property.
Oh, I got you.
This, running parallel, directly abutting it, is that larger 125-foot wide utility easement corridor. That's actually, it's not on private property, it's, it's public, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Would not affect that.
Okay.
Drainage corridor, isn't it?
It's drainage and allows for utilities. That's what those overhead lines are in there.
And it's owned by the city.
Good question. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lignis? Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
We need to open a public hearing on this item, so let's open the public hearing on consideration of resolution number 5471, abandonment of a public utility easement. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, I know Mr. DeLonge is here. Is there any other, do we need to ask him any questions, or is this pretty straightforward? Mr. DeLonge, unless you want to make a comment on anything? Okay, real good. Thank you. Then can we have a, a motion then approving item 4B, consideration of resolution number 5471?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? John, I'm sorry, I almost cut you off. All, motion carries. Thank you. Item 4C, amended public hearing in consideration of appeal, conditional use permit, CUP 23-001. An appeal by the applicant of a decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. A request from David Fret, applicant and Kingman Storage Partners LLC, property owner to amend a recently approved conditional use permit to allow fully enclosed RV and boat mini storage warehousing on property zone, commercial service business C3. The amendment requested is to eliminate a condition of approval for CUP 22-0008 that restricted non-office hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM all days of the week. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the requested amendment on May 9, 2023. The commission voted seven to zero to approve the new CUP, with the conditions including restrictions on hours of operation. Staff recommends upholding the decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Once again, Mr. Lignis.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Good evening. This, to set the stage a little bit, there was a previously approved conditional use permit for this and recently. And then they, under new ownership, the new owner didn't like the, the restrictions of the operational hours. And so they chose to appeal that, or basically apply for a new conditional use permit with those hours of operation restrictions removed. So that's kind of where we're at. They do have a current, current conditional use permit that's in effect. They are currently under site plan review. They're under all, all this that's ready for development, and so it's happening. But this, this current conditional use permit is, is, was a request to remove those hours of operation restrictions. Which the, I'm sorry. As you mentioned, it was, the applicant is David Fret, and the property owner is Commercial RE Investments LLC. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they heard the second conditional use permit, decided to basically keep the old permit, conditional use permit restrictions. So we essentially re-adopted a new conditional use permit with the same restrictions or same conditions of approval, which does have an operational hour restriction. Once that decision was made, the applicant appealed that decision to the council. As you're aware, CUPs now stop at commission unless it's appealed to council, and that's why we're here. Because the action was, they were seeking to overturn that decision from the PNC Commission. Let's see if I'm missing anything on this slide. Yeah, the, of course, the conditional use permit is, is for a fully enclosed RV and boat mini storage warehousing, which is in C3 zone on, along Andy Devine, 3645, and I'll show you a vicinity map here. Outline in red, there's a, there's that Dollar General right there at Horizon in Andy Devine. I think it's the only Dollar General in town, I'm not sure. Okay. But yeah, it's right there on Andy Devine. Sorry, couldn't resist. So there's a single-family home to the west, and then there's a manufactured home park to the west as well, and a closed fueling facility to the south. And then across Andy Devine, across Andy Devine is the, the MVD, and of course, our City of Kingman Public Works. This just shows general drainage and, and topography. This is some site photos. This is looking west towards the residential areas, and there's our public notification sign. This is the north towards Dollar General, and Andy Devine on your right, the dashed line is the subject property. Looking southwest, and you can still see the residence on the right there. And then here's Andy Devine looking east. And then here's some more, the reason I'm showing some of these residences is because this is, this comes into play is why the hours of operation restriction was there in the first place. So there's some abutting residences there, and then also the mobile home park and RV park, directly abutting the subject property. We went, the applicant went through the citizen review process again, because it was a new CUP. We did do the notice of the public hearing, went through that process. We did do department and agency comments. Generally, no, no new comments that changed any, any of the outcome of this, the conditions of approval on the new CUP. Conceptual site plan, there it is. There it is. It's the same as, generally is the same as it was last time. The analysis that we went through, I'll just touch on the second one there. Granting the conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. This includes any property damage, nuisances, hazards, or traffic impacts that could be created. There are no apparent, there were no apparent nuisances or hazards likely to be generated, and we do recognize that this, this may be a fairly low impact and quiet use, and we put that in our staff report. But we did point out to the Planning and Zoning Commission that consideration should be given to limiting hours of operation to six AM to ten PM to reduce any impacts on adjoining single-family home and manufactured home park and RV park. This is a, we've had a several mini-storage developments coming in, which all required conditional use permits. And when they're directly abutting residential uses or zones, we've, the Planning and Zoning Commission has applied that six-to-ten-hour sorry, six AM to ten PM operational allowance there, so the restriction beyond that of use, not including office hours if there's an onsite office or something like that, but to access and to move and to do all these different things. At a mini-storage, when it's directly next to a residential, those hours have been listed as a condition of approval on those, including this, this one. I won't go through all this for you. This is the, this is generally a, a lot of the information that we went through with the Planning and Zoning Commission. You all have the staff report. Here's just some building elevations. That top one is what you'd see from Andy Devine, by the way. Okay, so we got to the PNC Planning and Zoning Commission decision, and that was to approve this new conditional use permit with the following conditions, and it lists them. And the number twelve is the states' access to the site and operational hours, not including office use, shall be limited from six AM to ten PM all days of the week. That is the motion with those conditions that the Commission made, and it's in their final order, which is in your packet. Motion, option number two was to, alternatively, the, we said the Commission may make the same motion, but exclude the proposed conditions, condition number twelve. Which they, they went with the first option. So staff recommends upholding the decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, but alternatively, the council may overturn that decision, granting approval of CUP-twenty-three with all conditions of approval hopefully, with the exception of the restriction on the hours of operation. Now, the applicant did provide the, their appeal in your packet that lists the reasons why well, their, their argument for removing those restrictions and appealing this decision. And I'm not sure if the applicant's here or not, but I'll just mention that they assert that their their business is going to be operationally maybe different than a mini-storage warehouse would traditionally be, in that they offer, they're stating that they offer a more higher-end product. And they're they're approaching this as a, they're submitting a they're going to condominiumize or make condominiums out of these storage units. So it's gonna be an individual ownership plan that they have. So with that, they're asserting that there'll be more responsible action, more responsible access to the site, things like that. People will actually be able to remotely, I don't know, monitor their, their, their unit, and maybe the security cameras as well. So there is, there's, there's that assertion that because it's a different, somewhat different type of product, that it shouldn't really necessarily be considered under these mini-store storage warehouse CUP conditions and standards. And I'm not here to fully develop that argument, but I can say that we do have other products or businesses in town that may have a strip mall, or maybe, well, for instance, the Airway Plaza where the eye doctor is and all that, they're actually putting those into condominiums right now. And all the state law really allows us to do is to review a site plan and approve the site plan. And then when we get out of that condominium business, because then it's all regulated by the state. So when we review it, we review it for what it looks and smells like. It's, it's an airway plaza, medical and commercial outfit. For us here, these are just mini-storage warehouses for us. So we're treating them the same as all others, and that's why they're under the same land use code or categories as all others. Whether they're run differently, that's, that's, that's not what we're into, especially if it's condominiums. And I would say that potentially individual ownership, and planners always take, think ten, twenty, thirty, even fifty years down the road, so ten, fifteen years down the road, what happens when there's ninety different owners and no one is really actively monitoring things? It's kind of, who knows? It's a scenario that planners always think of, you know, these things, so what then? Who do we approach then? And so if we have these restrictions that are equitable and they're across the board as we apply these to different sites, personally, my judgment is that it would be fair and, and like I said, equitable and, and, because it looks and smells like a mini-storage warehousing, so. With that, though, I don't know if the applicant is here, but definitely they'll probably want to speak on, on, on this matter if they are. But with that, I stand for questions.
Okay, questions from council?
Mayor Watkins.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. I, I struggled with this, and my main concern is that these convey, these convey ownership, correct?
Well, not currently.
Okay, the, the project as they are proposing it conveys, fee simple title, transfer of ownership. So when I read in the, in the appeal, the private, private property rights, that's where I struggle. I, I struggle with us affecting private property rights, and I know that you say it smells like a storage unit, it looks like a storage unit, but you can't argue with the fact that it's gonna convey. There's individual ownership, you know, that, that's how they, they are sold. So I have some questions of the applicant, like I want to know, you know, are there CCNRs? Is this an HOA? You know, is, is it zoned for condominiums? Does it, that fall under this particular zoning?
It, it is, yeah, condominiums can be done here, commercial condominiums.
Okay, so, I mean, basically, this is a unique project, correct? We have nothing like it.
It's mini-storage warehousing.
It's condos that convey.
No, it, well.
With many, with storage units attached to them, yes?
As a land use, it's mini-storage.
Okay.
Ownership is collective or single. It matters not for the land use category. That's, that's where.
Okay. Okay, so let me ask my question another way. So if I were to go to the local U-Haul storage or any other storage facility, I couldn't purchase that. I rent it, I lease it, is that correct? I, I don't, I don't own a part in that, in that project.
They could change that overnight, though.
Okay. So I guess my question is I just feel like we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole here, and that, that's, that's where I struggle with this project, because it is unique. We have to put it under mini-storage units, but we're not looking at it any other, any other way. And so does this project have, or will this project have HOA or CCNRs or anything to that, to that nature?
Yes, the state requires them to have CCNRs.
Okay, so they're being treated as property?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the individual owners?
Multiple owners, yes. It's required by the state to have a CCNRs.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can see where I'm going, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where I struggle with this, because there are property rights involved here, and there are owners that are gonna own property.
Right.
And we are only taking a look at this through the lens of a storage facility, storage unit facility. So tho, those are my comments for now.
Yeah, if I may, it would be similar to, you know, like an airport, if you didn't have twenty-four ox, twenty-four access to your hangar that you might own fee simple or something similar. We try to look at it as a land use and its impacts, things like that, rather than necessarily what the ownership is, because it could be ninety owners, it could be one owner. So that's kind of how I have to look at it, because the state really takes us out of the condominium process, because if it meets the site plan approval stuff, if it meets all those criteria, then we really aren't involved. So the state kind of recognizes that, too. They say, if it meets all your other looks and smells like, and you apply all the relevant regulations, then now we're taking you out of it locally. You don't go through the whole process of a preliminary plat, final plat through the normal public hearing process.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, it's, it's a little.
Appreciate that.
It's a little interesting process.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Vice Mayor. Counselor Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. It's Mr. Lighness, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Mr. Lighness. Are we, are we as a council only deciding the appeal tonight on the hours of operation? Or, or are we deciding portions one through twelve on your slide twenty-three, twenty, uh, sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three? That's, I'm just, because, because you're like really breaking this up. I'm just trying to figure out what we're deciding.
Sure. We're, the council is considering the appeal of the decision made on the conditional use permit. And specifically, they want to overturn that decision so that there's no restrictions on the hours of operation. So you'd essentially be saying, yes, we agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there's a restriction, or we overturn it, and these all new conditions, these other conditions apply with, with the exception of the hours of operation.
But those are only options. You're either agreeing with PNC, or you're disagreeing with them and granting the, the full use of hours.
To respect the process of the CUP going to PNC, I would, I would understand that to be so, that the, the council is trying to keep it confined to just the appeal, not to necessarily rethink everything that the Commission's done.
Okay, then, then I have no further.
Carl can speak to that.
Correct. You're, it's, it's sort of like a court appeal. You're gonna deal, what the issue was raised, the issue is the hours of operation.
And so if, if we go with planning and zoning, it just means that they still have their conditional use permit attached with hour restrictions, that's it.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know. I, because we're not analyzing this further, I just wanna, I'm, I'm good on my questions.
Thanks, Counselor Pat. So Gary, didn't you say that basically the first CUP, that's what the, that's what it's the same thing? In other words, it has the hours of operation in there?
It's identical.
So there's no change. So why can't we just leave that original CUP in effect? What's the difference?
Well, because it is a
Because he's trying to appeal.
Pending application, so you have to make a decision on it.
Okay. My concern about this project, we've seen these before in other cities. I like the project. The problem is, it's up against residential neighborhood, residential, two residences are already there. If they weren't there, and there was nothing built there, and with the possibility of going commercial, that'd be something different. But because they're right up against residential, that is a concern. And let's face it, if someone wants to pick a big, park a big RV in there at any time of day or night, oftentimes those big rigs have, you know, big RVs have backup alarms on them. They're making a noise. So these are, once again, because it's up against resident, that's my concern. Counselor Ward?
Can we hear from the guy that?
Yes, we can, of course. Is there any other? Counselors?
The, it looks like there's a fence in between the residential and the back of the building. I could be wrong. On the design, are they gonna keep it that, what looks like a barbed wire fence, or is it gonna be upgraded to something else?
Actually, if we go back here, because this is zone commercial but residential uses, they may not necessarily have to install a solid wall fence, which would normally be required.
May not have to?
May not have to, yeah.
How, how do we determine if they have to put up?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm sorry, they may or may not do that.
Oh, they, it's up to them?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that could have been, that could have sort of answered some of the heartburn over helping to create a buffer between the residential and this building. So that's, I was hoping you were gonna say yes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Walker?
Block wall or no block wall, this building's tall enough to block the noise, because the doors are facing the front away from the residents behind it, so I, I think there is a buffer, because the building is that tall. That's all I have.
One more question for Mr. Lighness, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Pat.
Does the city put hour of operation restrictions on other businesses nearby in this area?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So this would be the only one that has an hour of operation restriction?
Correct. Conditional use permits, you're they open that up to subjective standards that the council and commission would understand to help increase compatibility with the surrounding. That's why that's a conditional use, a conditional use permit category. Otherwise, it would be an outright permitted use, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lighness.
Okay, I know the owner, or the representative for the owner of the property is here.
Oh, good, okay.
So if he would like to come forward? If you could state your name, please?
My name is Adam Paix. I'm the CEO of Lux Locker and co-founder. Appreciate your time tonight. Mr. Lighness did a great job actually explaining what we're doing. If I may just kind of give you a little bit of history and experience of what we've done, these are some challenges that we've had in the past and how we overcame them. So as you see here, I believe, yeah, that's Andy Devine, so historically, I'll speak with our original three locations in Lake Havasu, they all abutted up to residential. And those areas that we built were along a corridor called Sweetwater, which paralleled Highway ninety-five. So the, the theory was at the time that that building, because it's about eighteen and a half to twenty feet in height, would create a barrier for the road noise. The residents were concerned with the traffic, the ingress, egress, transient, what was gonna happen. In, in rezonings in those properties that we had, we didn't have to stay at our purpose, and they, they weren't conditional use permits. It was just a zoning change. We did what we said. We built the product and, and it all was well. It's, it's not a nuisance whatsoever. We've had zero noise complaints, or zero complaints at all from any residents, not only in Havasu, but on any, any location that we've ever developed. So I think that from that perspective, Councilman Walker had stated the height, it is actually a benefit to those residents. Typically, I, I don't know anything specifically development setbacks, so excuse me if I'm wrong. We typically use the, the building itself as the barrier, depending on what the setbacks are. If, if there's walls needed, that's, my team handles that part. I don't know that part. But as far as traffic is concerned, what we did is we have seven completed locations across the country so far, six currently in development. So we pulled the footage of the seven locations that we oversee. And over the last month of July, there were three people across all of them that came in after ten o'clock. Two of which were in Henderson, Nevada, which is a twenty-four-hour service industry area, so that's pretty common, considering the fact that nowhere else that we service has twenty-four-hour services like Las Vegas does. So out of the month, we've had one visitor that has come in after ten o'clock. That particular user was an RV that came in late, whether they were coming into town from a road trip. Alls we saw is that they went in, put it in, shut the door, left. So it, people don't generally congregate there. We do have CCNRs. In the state of Arizona, it, it does mandate it I'm gonna probably butcher this, but there are statutes that limit the powers that the declarant has, depending on majority ownership. So the way that we write our CCNRs is, we like to protect the brand. Lux Locker has specific rules. You can't live in it, you can't run a business out of it. You can have business goods in it to pick up, but you can't have people there, and you can't create commerce on a daily basis there. People do go out there, they tinker around for an hour. Sometimes people just go away to get out of the house, you know, just do what they do, men or women. But it's not an area in which there's gonna be a lot of high traffic. I think on the average in the day, I would say, this is anecdotal, probably five to ten people per day come during the daylight. None of these units here are going to have any upgraded services, no water, no sewer in the unit. in the units, no extra power, no climate control. So, it's a complete utility of just putting your stuff in, keeping it out of the elements, getting it, pulling it out, rinse and repeat. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Savage.
I'm sorry, I did not get your name, mister. What was your name again?
Adam Pakes.
Adam Pakes. Question for you, on the demographics that you typically host on these facilities, can you kind of explain that to us, please?
If I understand the question, you want to kind of know the characteristics of the consumer that's buying these?
Correct.
Probably somebody that has a disposable income between a hundred to two hundred thousand a year, if they're employed. Net worth is probably over a million bucks. And typical assets that they store is thirty percent RV, twenty percent boat or watercraft, fifteen percent classic cars, fifteen percent, actually, no, ten percent business equipment. Like, we have some folks that have plumbing companies, concrete companies, and they store actual physical tools there, because they, flex space is quite expensive. We have probably about the remaining fifteen percent, if my math is right, is probably household goods. So, that is one of the more non-common uses. But the demographics are someone that can afford to spend eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for a tin box.
So, you would be safe to say that you have responsible co-owners, correct?
I believe so, yes. We manage all of the locations that we develop, and so we have a team, we have a director of maintenance, and he has a team that's responsible for complaints, fixing items. We monitor the cameras daily. We're very aware of what happens, and we've kind of understood over the years people's habits, and generally speaking, we don't have many problems.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Savage. Any other questions for Adam? Okay, yes, Counsel Ward?
If I recall from the zoning meeting, all of the lighting is directed in.
Correct.
There's no, like, no glare back on the...
There will be no, there will be no lighting on the backside that will impede the residence's quality of life. I'm not even sure what our signage is going to be on the outside along Andy Devine. Hopefully, there is one, but...
And even the ones on Andy Devine, the doors face in, correct?
That is correct, yeah. Every, all the...
You're seeing the back of the buildings when you go back. Okay, that's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Okay, good questions. Seeing other questions? Thank you, Adam.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we need to open a public hearing on this. So, I would like to open a public hearing on item four C, consideration of appeal, conditional use permit, CUP two-three-dash-zero-zero-one. Is there anybody here in chambers that would like to have a comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, any other discussion on this? What's our temperature on this? This is an interesting one.
Mayor, that's what I wanted to know. I typically like granting property owners their requests. One of my biggest concerns, and I'm not trying to, you know, slight anyone or blindside anyone, especially Mr. Pakes, but I'm concerned about the traffic on Route sixty-six, but whatever, we're not deciding traffic. They already have it, they're getting this, so we're only deciding the hours of operation. I typically think that people who appeal, not everyone, because I have to deal with appeals, too, but people who are going through the steps, law-abiding steps, trying to make efficient use of their property, should be given a little bit more weight, but I'm willing to go with whatever the council goes with. I also recognize that we do have a Planning and Zoning Commission for a reason, and it was voted seven oh this way, so this is a coin toss for me.
Good points, Counsel Pat. I know, and that's the one thing I was thinking of, too, is I hate overturning what our commissions vote. But on the same token, too, I see the positive of this business. So, and it's, anyway, I agree with you. Counsel Ward?
Yes, I happened to attend the zoning meeting the night that this was discussed. And basically, it seemed to me that P&amp;Z was hung up on not wanting to set a precedent by changing the hours. And in my opinion, this is a totally different use, totally different animal. And I'm in favor of granting the relief that he's asked for.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I, too, just because of the uniqueness of the project. And, you know, reading through the appeal, there were several things to consider, and so, you know, I lean in favor.
Okay.
I have to agree.
Counsel Walker?
This is a very unique project. I see a large benefit for it. If I was one of the owners, and I could only access it till ten o'clock at night, if I had material stored that I needed for a job in the middle of the night, you know, it'd be rough. It's not a bunch of little units, they're big units, and, you know, individually owned. I support their endeavors to extend their hours to twenty-four.
Okay, I agree. Because it is a unique product, and as Mr. Pace pointed out, it's not for commercial use. Correct, Mr. Pace?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I think it's a plus. So, Counsel Segley?
Yeah, I just want to, just my two cents. I have a lot of respect for Planning and Zoning Commission, I think. A lot of smart people on that commission, and they're doing a great job. So, I have a hard time going against them, but I can see that this is different, because it's privately owned. I like the idea that they're keeping an eye on the property, and they're trying to keep things on the up and up. I know, I have an airstream that we store in our commercial garage, because it doesn't fit in a regular garage, and she can't sit outside. So, you come home late at night sometimes, and if you own that garage, you want, you're going to want to put, you know, your property away where it's safe, and you can't help it if a trip runs over. If you want to go fishing early in the morning around here, you got to get pretty darn early and go. So, it is different from a normal storage, in that they own the property, and they, property owners' rights, they should have access to it twenty-four hours. So, I am very sorry to the commission, but I just don't agree on this one.
Thank you, Counsel. So, Carl, how do we want to, do we want to vote supporting the appeal? Is how we want to word this, consideration of appeal?
Correct. What you do is you just make a motion saying you support the appeal that removes that condition.
Isn't that option two, Carl, on the thing? Because...
Should be.
Yeah, I think Mr. Likness put it in his PowerPoint, option two, is the approval with the exception of the restriction of hours? Maybe?
At the bottom there.
Yeah, yeah, it's option two on page twenty-three.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Cameron, do you want to make that motion?
I don't want to upset the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm in favor of this. Don't get me wrong, but I'm not making the motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, department reports. AE Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange update. Mr. Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. My update is we received twenty million dollars from the state. The end, no, there's more. That is the first item, though. We did receive our twenty million, and you can go to the next slide. So, the city has budgeted our portion of the project cost, and with tonight's approval of the budget, I've got good news, we still have budgeted for it. Thank you, Counsel. And then, the other piece is KDP manager, who is the developer, is preparing to have their portion ready to put towards the TI as well. Next slide. So, timeline...
Try to come in in the morning, you can't laugh.
Sean, you need to mute.
Counsel Savage?
We have the power. The project timeline, this, the traffic interchange, the bridge redesign is underway and expected to be complete by September. Part of the re-up on this TI was that we have to do a change of access update. That is being worked on, also expected to be done and approved by the Federal Highways folks in September. Ninety-five percent plans are anticipated to be submitted for ADOT review by the end of September, and the ADOT plan review generally takes approximately four weeks. At that point, AECOM will address the ADOT comments and resubmit the plans to ADOT. Next slide, please. So, ADOT will do their final review of the plans, and if all comments have been addressed, they will, the plans will be deemed at a hundred percent. ADOT will officially notify the city that the plans are complete, and the city will have thirty days to submit the engineering estimate for the TI that will go in escrow account with ADOT. And we have thirty days in which, when we receive that notification. Once ADOT receives the money for the project, they will put the project out to bid. Generally, that runs for about six weeks, sometimes a little bit less than that, depending on the complexity of the project. I listed six weeks, just because I think this project's complex. It's a TI after all. And then, AECOM indicated, in their experience, I actually confirmed this today with our district administrator with ADOT, that general rule is about five months to groundbreaking, once your plans are at a hundred percent. So, that is where we are with the TI. And the rest of the Parkway, the rest of the Parkway is KDP manager, and a meeting with KDP manager and AECOM, they reported that the designs for the large stormwater detention basin is almost complete, and the project utilities, water and sewer, design are also nearing completion. The one thing that continues to be the unknown factor is the litigation that KDP partners are currently engaged in. So, hoping that they can get that worked out. They've been ordered to mediation, and hoping that they can mediate their issues sooner than later. Next item. So, just update on the FAA environmental assessment for the road. We are currently, the draft is, our draft EA is out for public comment right now, and will close August twenty-fourth. Based on where we are with the current environmental assessment schedule, the NEPA decision document will be done the first of November, which means that we can start building on the property at that point. Happy to report that obviously, we're not held up on building the TI anymore with this, but expect that to be wrapping up shortly as well. And, next item. The other piece that we are working with, with the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, is we are working on a perpetual easement. The portion of the road that crosses onto our property, or into the county, is going to need perpetual easement, and so, it will come to the council for approval for that perpetual easement, since it's on our property. It will also go to the county, because they will be ultimately responsible for maintaining that section of the road, and we are currently working with the county on that. And so, I believe that is all the slides.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Foggan? Yes, Counsel Walker.
Manager Foggan, I know you talked about some easements, but is there any other right-of-way or easements besides that one that we need for phase one?
So, phase one, all the easements have been cleaned up. We had, we had them all, they've been approved by State Transportation Board, and when they were submitted to the recorder, the county recorder for recording, the county recorder felt like there were two names that needed to be corrected. My understanding is those have been corrected and resubmitted.
Okay, and what about drainage for phase one?
Phase one is not affected by the drainage.
So, we're good?
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
I guess I should say drainage has been worked out. The detention basin that's part of the rest of the project, we, I don't want to create any confusion, we often refer to this project as phase one and phase two. Phase one's the TI, phase two is the rest of the project.
So, we can proceed with phase one without any drainage?
Correct. Yeah, the drainage, all the drainage has been engineered away as part of the TI. The detention, any detention or moving the water further down the road is all in phase two. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Foggan? Yes, Counsel Segley?
We used to talk about receiving a letter of credit from our partners in this.
Correct.
But now, it seems like we're at a point where we would be receiving the money...
Correct.
Not a letter of credit.
That's correct.
So, we never received that letter of credit, but now it's too late, we're looking to receive a check.
That's correct.
At, can you go back and tell me which point that is?
It will be when we have to submit, when the plans...
Hundred percent.
Yeah, when the plans are a hundred, deemed a hundred percent, the, at that point, ADOT will basically invoice us for the engineering estimate for the TI. We will take the twenty million the state gave us...
Right.
And we'll take what we have, along with what the developer contributes, and submit that.
And hopefully, we wouldn't take thirty days to do that.
No, no, they're just, that's, you know, that's just, you know, when you talk to them, you got thirty days. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ron, remind us again total price on this project? I know it's gone up because of inflation.
Well, so, I don't have a great number for you. The total project that we submitted for the TI to the state was forty million dollars. So, that's about two and a half million dollars in water and sewer work that those departments will pay for. And so, and then, we're saving two and a half million dollars on the bridge work. So, we're looking at approximately thirty-six million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Item five B, bed tax report.
Thank you. This was requested. I've asked Tina to prepare a presentation and just walk you through what our current bed tax is, and how that compares, and any other options that she's put together.
Welcome again, Tina.
It's good to see you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. So, as Mr. Foggan shared, Councilman Walker actually requested this item a few council meetings ago. So, let's talk first about what bed tax is. So, bed tax, we call it hotel tax, we call it bed tax, we refer to it as heads and beds, but state statute actually calls it the transient occupancy tax. And that is anyone who obtains a lodging space for any consecutive period of time less than thirty days. So, what are some examples of when this would apply? Hotels and motels are subject to imposing this tax. are subject to imposing this tax, RV parks, campgrounds, dude ranches, we don't have any around here, but studios, and what's come, become very, a very used type of activity, our vacation, short-term vacation rental homes are also subject to this tax. What do we collect in the year for bed tax collections? So we collect about $2.8 million. Now, in fiscal year 21, we collected much less than that. That was during COVID, so people were not traveling as much. But we collect about $2.8 million. We charge 6.5% for our bed tax. 2.5% of that goes into the general fund. The other 4% is split evenly. Half of those go, half of those collections go into our capital projects fund, and the other half go into, to promote tourism. So one of the questions that we have talked about is can the bed tax rate be increased? And absolutely it can. However, there are a couple of things we need to consider when we're thinking about increasing the bed tax, and that is, one, any tax that the city wants to modify or increase is required to go to the voters, and that is in November on any even numbered year. So the next time that we could do that would be November of 2024. And for hotel tax specifically, there is a state statute that says a hospitality industry tax, which is hotel tax. If the tax is not in place by April of 1990, any additional tax must be used to promote tourism. So we wouldn't be able to use it on public safety or just streets, general purposes. It would have to be used to promote tourism.
I remember us debating this before. And it was, it, when you say promote tourism, it's not like a marketing to promote tourism. It can be events, it could be some type of infrastructure, anything that we could say was for the tourists, and then it would be believable. That's, it's a little bit more broad than that. Is that correct?
It's very vague and very broad.
Okay.
But the city attorney is.
Well, you used the phrase what's believable, and that's the, the point. It has to be something you can legitimately support, but yes.
Right. So things that we could enjoy as well, but would bring more tourists to town would fall under that.
I would say yes.
Okay. We don't ask him. He always says no.
And along those lines, thanks, Counselor Saly. An event center, I know that has been a talk.
We have talked about that, yes. And I, again, I'm going to defer to Carl.
It seems like an event center would be something that would promote tourism.
So yes.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So in thinking about just our bed taxes and how much revenue we can generate by increasing that tax, when you look at this chart, broken it out into increments and given an idea of what each of those tax increments will generate. So for every half percent, we would generate about $210,000 in bed tax revenues. So just taking that scale all the way up to 3.5%, so right now we're charging 6.5%. If we chose to go to 10%, we would collect an additional $1.5 million in bed tax revenues. Now, if we did decide to increase bed tax revenues, and we have talked about an event center, right? And if, if for some reason down the road there was debt, debt that we needed to issue to build some sort of infrastructure, of course, we're going to need to pay that back. So what, how much debt could we potentially borrow and use bed tax revenues to pay for that? So for, assuming 4% interest rate, assuming a 25-year term, for every million dollar, every million dollars borrowed, we would need to pay annually $64,000 in debt service. So assuming a $25 million piece of infrastructure, such as an event center, we would need to pay annually $1.6 million, which is about that 3.5% to 3.75% increase in bed taxes. And then you'll see if it's a larger amount. Of course, it's much more in debt service for that. So we always like to compare ourselves to other Arizona cities and towns. And so this is a list of some of the cities and towns, and I chose them for a reason. And of course, pulled some of the valley cities, just so you could get an idea, specifically Glendale. They do have a stadium that I'm assuming some of those revenues may go towards. I also pulled our sister cities, Bullhead and Havasu, and their current bed tax rate, the city portion anyhow, is 5%. Also looking at some other cities, Flagstaff and Williams on I-40, theirs are 4.5% and less. And then we have some of those unique touristy communities, such as Cottonwood and Jerome and Sedona, and you'll see that those range anywhere from, I want to say, 7% down to about 6% or so. What I did not put on here were some very, some outliers. So we have Colorado City, who actually charges 14% in bed tax. Town of Guadalupe is 10%. So it really ranges, there is no rhyme or reason, but I'm sure that councils have their purpose that they are using those bed tax revenues for. But this just gives you an idea of what other cities and towns are imposing for that.
Tina, by, by chance, did you happen to look at Laughlin?
As a matter of fact, I, I did.
It's right there.
But I am not an expert in the Nevada tax code, and so I did not want to put it on here. But when I did, just do a search and dove in fairly, and I don't want anyone to hold me to this, but 10.5% is what it looked like.
The, the total bed tax.
So the total bed tax. Mm-hmm. All right. So.
Tina, just on that question, I would remind you that we are always very cautious about comparing to Nevada based on the fact that they have gambling as, yeah, they have their own revenue.
Yeah.
So surcharges or surtaxes on, on hotels. Are per room, per night surtaxes allowed in the state of Arizona? So the city of Tucson is the only city in the state of Arizona that imposes this tax, and it is considered a tax. And this was done many, 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 many years ago. This, all cities in the state of Arizona follow what we call the Model City Tax Code. And so when the Model City Tax Code wasn't really formalized the way that it was today, cities were able to have exceptions to the tax code. This is one of those exceptions. No other city in town has ever chosen to have an exception since then. And since the Model City Tax Code has been in place, as part of putting that Model City Tax Code in place, there were agreements made with the legislators at the time that, hey legislators, we will put this tax code in place for the cities to use. We won't add any taxes to it. We will keep it the same as it is as time goes on to get support from the legislation. Also to get support from the Arizona Tax Research Association, who is a watchdog for all of the taxpayers. So they are heavily involved in what governments are doing with their taxes. So they gained support back in the day to put the Model City Tax Code together. So since then, there has never been an exception that has been granted for that. So is it allowed? There is nothing that says that we cannot do it. You can go to something called the Municipal Tax Code Commission, which is made up of nine mayors of other cities and towns. But it is highly unlikely that there would be support for that, just based on how the Model City Tax Code was composed and what we have done in the past with that code, which is, again, just kept to our promise really back in the day. So, so yes, but if the council did decide that they wanted to increase bed taxes, we would recommend just in tax, increasing that bed tax rate instead. This also would have to go to the voters as well. So that's it. Are there any questions?
Counsel? Yes, Counselor Saly.
I wonder if there's enough time between now and the next election to do the feasibility study and to put something together that said if you, if you approve this bed tax increase, this is exactly what the city's going to do with those funds, and it's going to be an event center. Is there enough time to put all that together, you think?
I don't know. I haven't looked at the timelines and the requirements on that, Councilwoman, but we can definitely look at that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counselor Walker, I know you asked for a report on this, and so I wanted to turn some time to you.
I knew we are looking to a way to fund an event center or something, you know, to help tourism and conferences and stuff like that. And talking with a few of the hotel owners I know, they were telling me Kingman's one of the lowest that they have. But they're in different states as well. They're not just in Arizona.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to report to see where we're at, what we spend it on, and what, what it looks like if we wanted to move forward. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Tina, quick question. So obviously Mojave County could raise their bed tax also. Well, I mean, it, that'd be put to the voters, correct or not?
So Mojave County has no sales tax right now.
Okay, so it's the state.
So it's the state, yeah. And all of the cities and towns are required to impose that state tax rate, too.
Correct.
But other counties have sales tax.
Have tacked on a little bit, too. Okay. I want to clarify, clarify those numbers there.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Continuing on with our agenda, item six, announcements by mayor, council member cities, members, and city manager. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. The only announcement I have is that First Friday is this Friday. Downtown is under construction with our new streetscape project, and they will not be closing any of the streets. So just want to let everybody know that First Friday is happening, but it has not been, it is not a special event where the streets will be closed.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Foggan, I apologize. The information I provided you must not come across clearly. There will be street closures in effect.
Well, there you go.
And I'm actually, will put out some additional community information because there was some confusion with the last First Friday. So yes, there will be street closures in effect from Third to Sixth Street, also on Fourth Street from Andy Devine till just south of Oak Street at the alley, and on Fifth Street from the alley just north of Andy Devine to the alley just south of Oak Street. So I, yes, we wanted to make sure the community does know there are road closures.
I misread it. Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
And please, please make sure if you are a downtown business owner or a community member that's enjoying that area, to not be parked in that closure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ward? Counselor Saly?
What?
I just wanted to get out, help get out the information about the Kingman Center for the Arts. They have a gallery right here on Bill and Fourth Street, and every year they do a fundraiser. It's the Six by Six painting. And so you can, this Friday, during First Friday, you can stop by the gallery and pick up one of those blank canvases, take it home, paint it, donate it back to the gallery. And on August 29th at 5:30, they will do their auction, which is a really fun event, free event to the public. You can come in and look at all the different canvases. Even if you didn't make one and put it in, stop by and, and bid on a couple of those and help keep that gallery open.
Great, thank you. Counselor Pat?
Nothing from me.
Counselor Savage?
Just wanted to say, missed you all tonight. Hope to be there soon.
We miss you, Sean, and we hope you get better soon.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
I thought you might mention the ribbon cuttings we went to.
Oh, I'll leave that for you.
Okay, we've gone to a number of ribbon cuttings of new businesses opening up, but probably most notable happened at our powerhouse visitor, visitor center. And actually honoring Angel Delgado and the Delgado family and their businesses over in Seligman. But the most important part is, is Route 66. And there's a new display up on the second floor, and it's interactive. It's actually a really neat exhibit, explaining about the Delgado family and their, their experiences on Route 66 and how they've been able to push Route 66 forward. So I would encourage everybody to go see that exhibit. And of course, once again, thanks to all of you, both as citizens and of course employees of the city for all that has done in our city to make our city a better place to live. Item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Okay, seeing none. We are council, we need a motion to go into executive session. Item number eight. Carla, you need to read that while we're going into that? Okay. Item 8A, executive session regarding KDP manager and KX Ventures development agreements. City, city council requests an executive session regarding KDP manager and KX Ventures development agreements pursuant to ARS 38-431.03. Discussion and/or action to follow. So we are going to executive session. Obviously, you're welcome to stay here in chambers, but I would think that most of you are going to go home. But have a good evening if you do. And we are going into, oh, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in executive session. Okay, we are in executive session.
We have to just wait for Annie to turn it back on and then we can... We're good? Okay. We have no decision from executive session and we are back and we are adjourned. All of you have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thank you.